All right, Dean, 6 o'clock. Welcome, everyone. Abbott and Blaney Board meeting, September 12th. Start with, we have four mazes left.
We do. We have two on the agenda. For any Bedford Street, just to let you guys know real quick, I got an email this afternoon that they went out to put in some bounds and they found some markers they hadn't discovered before. So they'll be back in October with a slightly revised ANR plan.
This is 380 Bedford?
380 Bedford Street, yeah.
Is anyone here for that?
No, they sent me an email asking if they could just push it off till October. So I think maybe if you guys could take a motion to approve my request to do that.
Make a motion to move this to the October meeting.
So?
Second. Second, do you make the motion?
I get it.
Okay, cool. All right, motion made, seconded. All of us in favor?
Aye.
762 and 770 Washington Street. Here is the Mylar. Send that down your way. It's for you. Carl Gavi is here, if you'd like him to explain what this is.
So currently, is parcel A attached to lot one or is parcel B attached to lot? Current.
Okay, that's the original subdivision plan.
You want the Bedford Street aside?
Yeah, well.
The same, all working up?
That's how the original subdivision plan was done back in, I think, what, '86, by Russell Leegley. I'm not sure why it was configured that way because they had a right-of-way going up here for a driveway to go to the house. Sean Riley, attorney Riley, took it to the zoning board of appeals for variances for frontage in area even though the frontage was not, the lot that had a 50-foot front and a 70-foot front over there. So it was really just a swath within the Smith family property driveway until the building was come up here. I've no idea why this decision made, what, 30 years that way. This is a copy of, I gave you a copy of the zoning board decision.
You did, yes.
And I possibly would have known on August 11, 22, the zoning board of appeals granted a 50-foot frontage plus a lot 1A.
Yep, same thing.
Lot 1, that's 17,000 square foot, lot 2A, 2000. And the street, so driveway for this house is real clear, driveway for this house is.
Yep. So on this one, it does indicate the old cesspool. I assume it's tied to several hours, abandoned in the meantime.
It is.
And the reason this was, I think, granted was because of the tricky configuration of the property and it's on a cliff and it's a historic home, it's very historic home.
Yeah.
Hopefully, yeah.
It's kind of been at the end of the book, last couple of years.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Magic box.
All right, the magic box, I have a red shopie, I'm not sure, it's written for your date to approve that. And while this gets signed, Chris Carmichael, our new building inspector, is here. Because you guys can sign them, listen, right? Come on in.
Good evening to the board. My name is Chris Caroline, I'm the new building commissioner. Been here about two months now. So just wanted to introduce myself to the board. Like to know, I'll be your enforcement officer under any order of conditions presented on these special permits. We don't, either through Liz or I, you can reach me directly for building problems, give me questions concerning the fall, anything prior to issuance. I've been pleased to be here and I just wanted to introduce myself. So thank you, be at time.
Thanks for coming today.
Quick question. I think one issue we're having as a board is making sure the decisions that we make here then show off in the projects as they're built. We want to find out the best way to either word our decisions or communicate with your office that this is what we expect, or if something changes, like how to communicate better. Because, for instance, you know, we had a commercial building that was built, the facade is completely different than what we approved. And frankly, we changed my vote on it if that was how it was going to end up. But, you know, I don't know how that translates from what happens here goes to your department. I know you weren't here at the time. Something changes and the final building doesn't look like what was approved through the planning board. So how do we handle those situations?
So we are online now. So if I see any new construction in a commercial zone, I'll automatically send it over to Liz for signature. We had marijuana facilities.
I'm going to, I'm just going to time out real quick. We're not online.
You don't send you an email?
You do, but what the process has been is that I have the applicant come in, make sure they're all set, make sure the decision letter criteria has all been met. They give me a copy of the plan and they sign the paper application and I send it all down to you.
Okay.
So what I was thinking is I will still do that because the board members have the authority to sign off on that stuff, but then I could sign electronically for them and send down the stuff anyway. So if that's okay with you, I just wanted you to know that you do get a copy of the plan that they approved.
So I am still transitioning from like a 19th century paper system into an online 21st century. So we will work it out. We had something come in last week and before they even came to building, I did send it up to Liz, make sure that they were all settled, we were under our conditions and that was upon my initial meeting with them. So I am aware of it. I've seen it in other towns where we get presented something completely different for the number of units that were approved here comes through different or we have a grossly different number. So I am aware of that, I've seen it in the past and I will be looking for it. Okay, thank you. Great.
One other question, Tom. Did you pay a site visit to 678 Adams?
I have recently, yes. Concerns there, yes, they should have ripped that building down, but they chose to remodel it. So now they're in pain because of it. So they're going to go two steps back before they move forward. They are, we did have some problems and I am addressing them as they go and they become uncovered. So they were only going to do a partial removal of the interior walls, I'm making them rip out of all of it. They had a sagging hip roof, I'm making them replace it. So they should have removed the whole building, but they didn't. I'm aware there were some problems with the gravel driveway prior to my arrival.
A lot of discussion about that.
Okay, so yeah, if you could fill me in on that and let me know where this board wants it and I'll make sure it happens prior to final occupancy. So we have initial permitting and then we have final occupancy, so I can hold both over their heads. So, you know, until this board's happy, I'm more than happy to hold that occupancy permit.
Can we ask about the status of the other one in Bedford Street that's half torn down?
Which one, 1410?
Yeah.
I've removed them from the building because he had someone living on the second floor with generators. The building was declared unsafe by MRI, again, by MRI.
The entire structure?
They had gas lines open next to electrical. There was a shack built upon a shack that, again, that structure should have been removed. But they're doing piecemeal and a lot of value engineering. So they're under a stop, they were under a stop work currently. Hopefully, you can get it going. I'm trying to work with their engineers and their architects, but again, a lot of value engineering going on there, so.
Is there a way on our end to know when, in those situations, when really it should be a tear down versus a run over, is it just to get into it?
Yeah, I have to go out and see it.
You have to go.
Really need to go out and look at it. And sometimes, just looking at it through the site and you really can't tell until they really demo.
Yeah.
And then we'll go in and do an analysis. So yes, I'll keep you in the loop. I kept Scott in the loop because I know that's big and if it wasn't going to get stopped work, you know, he needed to know about it. So I'll keep Liz on the line and, you know, as we move forward, knowing what you're looking for. But I need to know what you're looking for. So if you want me to come and join in on some of these meetings, I'm more than happy to.
I think we'd love that.
Okay.
Perfect.
So please, please send me an invite on some of the bigger projects that you've got coming out or?
And I just wanted to let you know, you get a copy of everything I get.
Yeah.
For like preliminary, when somebody applies for it, I send you a copy of the plan and a copy of the project description, whatever I get, you get a copy of that. So if there's anything there that you think is not right?
Okay.
And you want to run out and check it?
That sounds good.
Feel free.
Yeah. No, that's fine. I don't know, I'll have access to the site. I don't want to violate anybody's.
Yeah, no, no.
So I have to be invited.
I mean, like a drive-by situation.
You can only see them so much at 40 miles an hour. But again, if they're coming before you, we have the right to do a pre-inspection prior to occupancy. So I'm happy to use that at any time. All right?
Thank you.
So was I.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you both as well. Again, Chris Carmichael, please let me know what I can do for you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who do you want to go, Ellen?
Dan Roman, discuss the forest on Chestnut Street. Mr. Roman?
You call Dan Roman?
Yes.
Oh, that's me. Surprised you took me so early. Can I, is there a place I can put these pictures?
Do you want to pass them around? If you think they'll be beneficial?
Yeah, I can. Okay. My name's Dan Roman, I live at 222 Linwood Street in Abington. My wife and I started a website, U-dash-wikening.com, to protect and preserve the environment. I'm here to talk about why it's so important to protect and preserve the Chestnut Forest. And this, this is a picture of the area of the Chestnut Forest. It's a really big, beautiful area. For the past two years, the residents have voted down planning board articles that would encourage development in this area. This is an area of natural beauty. It's an Atlantic white cedar swamp that took tens, if not hundreds of thousands of years to create. It's the best and most economical water filtration system in the world, White Cedar Swamp in Abington. Very few of them know. The 2019 master plan prioritizes the protection of this area north of Chestnut Street through conservation easements and calls this the protection of ecologically valuable open space and overall woodland field, woodland field of our community. That's from our master plan. The Old Colony Planning Council designated this area priority protection, and this is the map, which shows that this chestnut area up here in the corner here is a priority protection area. It's green. As you can see, there's a reddish-purple area and that's where they say priority development area. So that's over Route 18. But over here in the Chestnut Forest area, they said this is a priority protection area. I will have this online, I'm going to put it up, email you guys and you can see the pictures and I'm also going to put it up on social media. So final map too, this is the Mass Wildlife's Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program. And this map is of an area that they call core habitat. And that's right here, right here where we're talking about the Chestnut Forest. This is core habitat, the Chestnut Forest, and the 500 Chestnut, 500 Chestnut is in that area. Okay, halfway done. This is also a greenway for wildlife and it could be a greenway for humans as well. From Ames Knoll up through the Holbrook Town Forest, through Caromary Pond and through the Braintree Front Town Forest and up north towards the Blue Hills. So that's a green corridor for wildlife and could also be a green corridor for us as humans to get around. At the last town meeting, the planning board worked hard to pass Article 14 to create a marijuana overlay district in this area. And several residents, including myself, voiced that it would be better to keep the MOD, as you call it, the MOD district, and the Route 18 area. Because there's two MOD districts, the one over on Route 18 and then you're talking about the second one in the Chestnut Forest, which I'm saying, why not keep those metal buildings on Route 18 like Bridgewater has done? This is a satellite image from space of 500 Chestnut Street. This area here is a wetland area that was connected to the Atlantic White Cedar Swamp, but now it is disconnected. This is also an image of that area, 500 Chestnut and as it abuts, the wetland area where the drainage comes down into the Atlantic White Cedar Swamp. And this is what an Atlantic White Cedar Swamp is. It's wet all the time, all year long. And that's the only way that white cedar, white cedar trees can grow. And it's a real miracle of nature. And we have it right here in Abington, one of the few left. Probably created by beavers at one time. Now, I'm asking the planning board and all concerned residents of Abington to do everything we can to protect and preserve this beautiful and irreplaceable area we call the Chestnut Forest. And lastly, I'm asking for transparency in the writing of articles by the planning board and to keep the residents informed at the earliest date possible about the plans that are being made for this town. I think the people should be informed. I was having a hard time finding out about articles and I would only find out about them , what, two weeks before the town meeting? And that's not enough time really for us to prepare to try to protect the environment. So my belief is that there's more and more people that are coming out to saying, we want to protect and preserve our environment. There's, every day, there's more and more people who are stepping out and actually standing up and saying, protect our environment. Because as we know, that Lady Abington tells us, once it's gone, it's gone forever. Lady Abington was blown up the smithereens to make white for Route 18. Just imagine if we had this right now, it'd be a tourist attraction. So I'm just asking you guys to protect that area and to reconsider your plans and your articles for the preservation and protection of the wood environment we have left. All right, I thank you all. And thank you for your patience.
I have one question about that. John Harris, 1022 Washington Street. How did that degradation happen around there? Does anybody understand how that wetlands was destroyed that attached those two together? I mean, that looks like it's been there for a while. But how did that, is there any plans to have that litigated or to be re?
So this was a plan that was brought before us five years ago at this point. It went through multiple months of hearings, it went through zoning, it went through conservation, it went through planning board.
So the wetlands issue was mitigated at that time?
Yeah, wetlands issue was, they were replicated elsewhere on the site to, I mean, I think, I don't know if it was two to one, but it was certainly one to one. I think two to one is the minimum, isn't it? I think, yeah, Peter?
Well, I guess my main point is that's disgusting looking. How did that happen and why is that looking like that now?
Because that's what it's owned for. Town meeting, Abington Town Meeting, the voters of Abington approved for that area to be available for commercial development. And so legally, we can't deny it just because we don't like it.
Yeah, okay. Well, I guess I don't like it.
Yeah, right. So we understand the concern.
Yeah.
You know, it's built. It's being built, it's going to be built, we're not going to move to tear it down. But I think what is fair to say is that, you know, there's nothing we can do to change, there's no zoning in town that we can adopt that says, no building is allowed on this site at all. Like, there isn't a preservation zoning that we can put in place.
Okay. There's a similar situation to like that up where the old driving is. I was all wetlands at one time and I understand a lot of that, but filled in whether legally or illegally.
Yeah, so I mean, the way that I look at it, and I don't want to speak for the members of the board, is that, you know, I wholeheartedly support the efforts of the Open Space Committee and the Board of Selectmen to negotiate a friendly taking of all the land around there. I think that's what they're working on now. Conservation, no, conservation, open space, Board of Selectmen, community preservation, because that's the mechanism which we pay for. So for the planning board, we have an international plan that we think should be preserved. That was adopted, by the way, after the project was passed. But, you know, we can't adopt zoning, I think Mr. Breelman has mentioned it, we can't adopt zoning that prohibits construction on land for conservation purposes.
And we don't own it. The town doesn't own the land.
So I think the town is a lot more aware of some of these conservation issues the past couple of years, which is great. Our hands are tied in some ways about what we can say and do and how we can say no to some of these things.
Fair enough.
But it's amazing land up there. I mean, there could be a path literally where you walk Rockton to Braintree, all through the woods up there. I mean, almost all the way up to Blue Hills, through that little corridor. It's really an amazing stretch, so.
Any other comments while the board was? Great presentation, thanks for Mr. Breelman for his time. All right, next item on our agenda is request to release surety roll on 351 Summer Ave.
The Summer Street or somewhere?
Summer Street.
Okay.
I wonder if that's summer.
Just reading the agenda.
That's summer. I got, I think, did I give you guys a copy of the SciTech letter due August 1st? The remainder of the items required by the board has been completed. I got his file numbers from the collector collector and it's included in the vouchers before you decide tonight, but it does need to be released.
Do we know what the surety amount is?
Yes, it's $25,908 and changing. This project goes back to 25,908, 54. I think this goes back to 2015, 2014, somewhere around that, maybe earlier.
Any discussion?
So we got pictures of what the finished work looks like. Does anybody inspect this or review it?
Did you, I think you went up, did you put 351 on the last stuff? Or I think this was the last stuff that you said needed to be done and then they did. So I didn't send it back.
And that got what?
Summer Street, Steve Zaboski's project. Oh, I'm sorry, it was P and P.
No.
Yeah.
That's my N P.
Yeah.
One time ago.
I, I sent this to Pat. This was the last thing.
Okay.
This kind of went on and on and on and tried to close it out and there were still two items left and this was it.
Okay. Motion to release the surety?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
And the next one is request to sign covenant and to release a lots on Robert English Way.
Okay. So you guys all received a copy of the covenant. That attorney Riley drew up on behalf of the Rorx and Mentos to get Robert English Way into a covenant because it was not the covenant. And when Mr. Rourke sold four of the lots to the Mentos and one of the lots, the corner lot that has frontage on McHugh Circle, I believe one of his clients was interested in buying and has gone to zoning to get relief so they can purchase the lot and build a single-family home. But none of that can happen until there's a covenant in place. So he drafted the covenant, it went to both parties attorneys and it went to town council. The covenant you guys have is not, you guys got, your packet was not the one from the town council. I just got our answer on Friday. So the revised covenant that is on right before you from tonight is the one that town council has reviewed. She added items four and five for the protection of the town and we put that packet together. So she says it's up to you whether you decide to release that one lot, because what's before you tonight is to release the one lot, 3A, which is the lot that has frontage on McHugh Circle. And I actually have a copy of the plan. So this was the approved plan. Everybody can see, and that's Robert English Lane and this is the lot they're asking to be released from the covenant.
So just to fully go back, we approved this subdivision with the conditions that the applicant couldn't build, sell, transfer, do anything with the lots until he had built the roadway?
Finish it. Finish it, I think at this point. Were you the one who went out there, Dave? And there were just a couple of things on the checklist to finish McHugh Circle. And we're holding surety on McHugh Circle, so I need to be very clear about that. Do we, if he failed to do that tomorrow, there's money to go and finish McHugh Circle, which I think is just a top coat. But yes.
This was the covenant, he had to finish McHugh Circle before he could start this and he couldn't do anything with the lots. He couldn't sell them. This is what the covenant said, correct?
That's what his decision letter said and then he never, the covenant was never signed.
And so this covenant was never signed, it was never filed, and as a result, it goes away? It dissolves, it's no longer binding after a certain date?
I can tell you when I initially sent this to town council, she said, that's fine, we just won't ever accept the road.
I mean, that's not the issue for me.
I know, I know. But there's so much history to these things.
Yeah. My, my concern is that this person, this developer, was specifically told things to do, did not do them, and now is still profiting off of this. And I have a real problem with that.
It's not the first issue with that.
Right. So I have a major problem that I don't know if the people who are building these lots knew that there was a covenant that was never filed and never performed, never executed, never followed through on.
What town council said to me was, we can't, we can't hold them accountable for the other person's actions.
Okay, so I guess here's my question. Who is going to be building the roadway and all of the infrastructure that goes along with it?
So as of today, as we speak today, Mentocorp owns the lots and the road. And that last lot right here is still owned by Jim Rourke. So this is owned by Jim Rourke and the rest of the lots around here, so in effect, the person that would be building that road would be Mentocorp.
Is that accepted?
No. This is not accepted because they wanted to build this road and then do the final code on this road so we wouldn't destroy this road with the heavy trucks and equipment that would be going in to finish this road.
So this lot doesn't have frontage on approved way?
No.
Okay. All right. What happened to this lot?
Lot 3A, it's approved. McHugh Street is approved, it's just not a public way. So, I can be clear about that.
It's a private way?
McHugh Circle right now is still a private way because it's not accepted by the town.
Right.
See, that lot was approved, not as part of the Robert English subdivision, it's approved as part of McHugh Circle. They changed the configuration, and the frontage for that lot is always on McHugh Circle.
The frontage is, but the lot is part of this subdivision because it's got a drainage basin that's attached to that subdivision on the lot. So, that's why it's still part of that, the new subdivision, the Robert English subdivision.
What happens if we don't agree to this?
If we don't agree to this, then we never take the road. We go back, the fallback position is what town council said, and that's, we just never take the road.
Okay.
We would have to take McHugh Circle because that's how it was approved, and we are holding surety to finish that if we need to.
My concern is, once again, by signing this, we are letting him off the hook, again. He's done nothing that we've asked him to do, and he's going to now walk off with a check, and he's not going to have to worry about anything else that he said he was going to do.
Well, he still owns 3A. I mean, you cannot release it. The covenant before you tonight is to release 3A.
Yeah.
So, you don't have to do it. And then that corner lot doesn't get released.
What are we talking about on McHugh Circle?
McHugh Circle, they have put into a covenant, and the Mentos own it.
All right, so let me.
So, that covenant would have to get released, but here's a copy of the release.
No, it's more the map of which lots are.
So, it's the covenant?
I know I have this.
That was submitted as asking for 3A, all right? And then this is very clear, it says lot 3A only on the release. So, town council has approved the covenant that has been signed by the parties that own the land, all the land, the road and the corner lot.
We don't have to release that lot, which is owned by the Rorx. 3A?
Yeah.
So, they're only building five houses, that's better.
So, obviously, they want to sell that lot.
Yes.
Without the other one being developed. I guess I'm on the same page, because that's very specifically how we committed that extension of that road, with the finish we started.
Could I ask this question as well? Because I'm disappointed, I don't trust anything. So, we had specifically also said that one of the, there'd be essentially a deed writer that let whoever were buying these lots know that they are buying a lot next to a public recreational spot where they have musical concerts and track meets, and we're not going to listen to any noise complaints, because they need to know what they're getting into. Do you know if that has been included in any of this?
I don't. I don't. I can ask the assessment office to print out that land transfer.
Okay.
If you guys want to do this on October 3rd.
That would be great.
I can get that information.
Liz?
Yep.
I'm Jason Kennedy, I'm buying the four lots from the Mentos, and there is a deed research, and they have to state that there is something related to the van stand that every Sunday night, Sean Riley's made that clear.
That is, that is in there.
Yes.
So, my frustration isn't with you.
I know, I can see.
There's this untangling underneath here that goes back many, many, many years, to many other problems.
I understand, from what I know, we just want to draw this title work and issue of legislation. They said Rourke just has to do the top coat on McHugh Circle, and he's met all the other requirements. Of course, you guys have your own decision to make, but that's the last outstanding item that I'm aware of. And there's $96,000 in the account to cover that, so.
Yeah, I don't know that it's so much about McHugh Circle as it is about that the lots on Robert English Lane have split up and sold.
They've already met sold.
That's what I mean. I think that's, I think that's where the angst is coming from. And I mean, I don't know if you saw this either, but they did reference a covenant dated back in 2000, which was the covenant for Brad Tree, which had already been released.
Has that been fixed as well?
No. I mean, this new covenant has to be, the new covenant that you guys have before you has to be filed by them. So, if you want to wait, and they can file that covenant, and you can release lot 3A at the next meeting, and I'll get a copy of the deed to make sure everything you wanted on there is on there, we can do that. Or you can.
Yeah, I would like to.
Okay.
Again, bonding problems, this rest of the subdivision has been going on since 20 years, at least, probably longer, and it hasn't come to an end yet. This is why we made the decision we did with Robert English Way, that everything else be finished.
All right, so they need to record the covenant that I gave you guys a copy of, right?
You know, and I hate to go back on what we said, that it kind of makes sense that they'll let the top coat to do them together, if that's what their plan is, because you're going to have trucks going in, and they're going to have equipment going in, and they're going to, are they still responsible for the, any other damage on that road other than just the top coat?
My recollection is that when we looked at the bonding for this, if you go back in the, I think there was a decision by the Planning Board not to pave the top coat until at least all of the utilities to serve this Robert English Way were installed. And I think that was one of our recommendations, that it didn't make any sense to pave it only to dig it up and sew it up to it. So, I think this is on record.
Is everything else taken care of? Because I think there was also a detention basin that was not completed as part of McHugh.
Well, the detention basin that was on McHugh is now part of.
That was part of this.
Robert English.
Yeah.
There was always a detention basin on that lot, but they modified it as part of McHugh, part of the Robert English.
My English way.
So, my recollection, I worked on that for three years, was that everything was pretty much done in there, and they're holding off the repair, and the final payment sort of could all be done.
Which, which makes sense. Is that, is that enough money, 96? Do you want to say cause some damage up there?
Yeah. That doesn't, that doesn't, you're working around the English rest.
Yes.
Separate.
Detention basin here.
That is in writings about paving the road. Liz, you've seen a copy of that too?
Yeah.
That the road can be paved, not be brought in to that.
Right, I think that's what they're saying, is they hope that's how it all gets done together with, that nothing can go in, they have to dig to get the utilities in and not to have to rip things up two or three times to do that.
So, are you doing that whole subdivision, the four lots?
Yeah.
Are there any other outstanding pieces with McHugh besides just the top coat?
No, I think everything was pretty near well-completed, and it really, like, the top coat was the big nugget on that. But I do think there were some other requirements, like about the tree spines.
There's a 25-foot buffer.
25-foot buffer, right?
And that is on the plan that I see.
The van stand, well, I think that was supposed to be in the, in the deed too.
Actually, on the plan, there's a clear easement there, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so I'll pull the decision letter for that and see what you guys wanted included in the deed, and then make sure it's all in the deed.
Then could we also get some sort of guidance from the town council to make sure we don't have a situation like this again, where?
She would like to go over the decision letters for subdivisions.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yep. And to include a time limit. So, if they're not started within X amount of time, then they lose their right to do it.
Do you want to stand up?
Yep.
One more question, please. Liz, I'm reading from Attorney Riley's email to you dated August 16th. And we talked about this a little bit, although the subdivision plan was endorsed by the Planning Board in 2018. The plan itself wasn't recorded until 2021. No covenant for these new lots was ever recorded. Instead, a handwritten revision on the recorded plan referred to a previously-recorded covenant, which was a 2001 covenant, et cetera, et cetera. So, obviously, things were not done the way that they should have been, correct? And part of the question I have is, how is it that the board doesn't have any visibility into that? Where's the check and balance? So, if somebody doesn't do something that they were supposed to do, and that situation exists for years, and we don't know?
I think specifically for this subdivision, and it wouldn't pertain necessarily to any other subdivision, but for this subdivision, because it started here, and then this was an extension, and then this was an extension.
Yep.
So, every plan that got filed, it was modification, extension, modification, extension. It wasn't a regular project.
So, in the normal circumstances, how should it work?
So, in a normal circumstance, we'll see that tonight, we have, I'm not sure, Carl's here for it, I think, Chain Path Road? No? Guys outside.
The normal thing is, is you don't sign the subdivision plan.
Right.
Until you have.
Have a covenant.
Typically, you sign the covenant and the subdivision plan at the same time.
There you go.
Because as I say, the approval is taken for the covenant, so if you do that at the same time, it's okay.
That makes a lot more sense.
Yep.
And instead of doing that, they got the plan signed, we didn't have a covenant, and then they just referred to the original covenant for Brad Tree, which was then released, so the road could be accepted. The covenant, for all intents and purposes, didn't exist anymore.
Typically, I think typically, once you post a bond, the covenant, and you release the lots, the covenant is rarely not of interest, because the decision is either you sign a covenant restricting the sale of the lots, or you post a bond.
Right. And that would have worked, except the covenant they were referencing were for lots that had already been released.
The answer to your question two.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
There you go.
Is to do them both at the same time.
Does it have a registry of deeds problem to, to be filed, something with a covenant on it?
I don't know, and it was, this town council also referenced the fact that this was way too late, like, they signed, we signed it in 2018, the clerk signed it in 2020, and I can filed after that, so there were a bunch of things that weren't right with all of this. But I think, at this point, we kind of are where we are, and once we get the answers to those questions, maybe we can find a path forward to get the lots. But I get where you're coming from, that you want everything that was supposed to be on the deed writers on there.
Just to make sure.
Oh, I agree. All right. Do you want to watch series?
Sure.
Get some of these people home tonight?
I have a good night.
Need 605, more or less, site plan review, 49 Lincoln Boulevard, Seoni, continue.
All right, so calm down, easy.
Well, I guess at the previous meeting, we had showed the parking area, the landscaping along the Harris property, the Stanley property, and so forth. At that time, we showed a proposed chain link fence along the top of the wall, just to refresh the board's memory. We had a temporary fence in front. At that hearing, Dave?
One quick question on that, so I think we said that the chain link fence, we agreed that there's a safety concern there, and it was a good idea to proceed with that.
Yeah, and it were. It is, so.
It's beautiful.
I mean, basically, the area that, at the end of the meeting, was what were we going to do with the front portion of the lot? There was some question whether Dave really wanted to do the wall in front, even though we did show it. So, since that time, Dave has committed to doing the wall, which will change the front, a little bit of this front portion of the site, with some, basically, just landscaping in front of, this fence that you approved for safety reasons is going right across, and then connecting into the existing building, landscaping in front of it. Then this area here has a decorative stone, there's a retaining wall that comes down along the Harris, well, inside the Harris property, with some landscaping along Lincoln Boulevard, and then wraps up to the existing grade, which we showed a detail of. We had talked about at the last meeting about a drainage swale depressed in front of the wall, which we advised to show that it's an 18-inch, deep by 18-inch wide trench in front, which is also noted over on, which was a recommendation of Dave. I showed six inches, and Dave requested that I change it to 18 inches. So, basically, there hasn't been that many changes from the last meeting, other than basically planting decorative stone and so forth.
So, how often is this area going to be used for vehicle storage?
The area that we use.
Yeah, of course, though.
On a daily basis?
Yeah, basically. So, the note that we received from one of our, Dave, was it you that reviewed this?
Yes.
Was that this area can't be used, or shouldn't be used, for vehicle repair, changing oil, changing fluids, you know, that sort of thing, because there's no drainage joint there, it just goes into the ground, that. Any issues with that?
There won't be any mechanical work or any drainage, just, I mean, oil change.
No.
On the weekends, it's more, when we don't work, when the crews are out, the trucks, there might be two or three there during the day. And then on the weekends, it's predominantly, predominantly we're putting nursery stock and pallets of granite and parts of new jobs.
Turn the plan over to the other side.
Oh, the one we have before?
Yeah.
It was this area in here that was being untouched. Well, it wasn't, no.
So, that's maybe on the way to the stone, push down.
It's a wall along the street. This is the new one, that shows the decorative stone area.
So, is this some street?
No, not really. I mean, you wanted to do something with it, but we had no, at that time, we were really just talking about the question over the retaining wall and so forth. Originally, that's kind of how this all started.
Dave, could I just ask a question?
Sure.
Going back to your September 6th letter to the board, we talked about the 18 inches instead of 6. The site won't be paved without returning to the Planning Board for approval of a storm block, stormwater design. And then you had said, "Maintenance of vehicles, which involve the use of potential contaminants, oil, grease, transmission fluids, et cetera, shall not be conducted on the site until the stormwater system design is submitted and approved by the Planning Board." And you said the word "maintenance," that I just want to be clear about. So, that is, when you said maintenance, were you thinking in terms of what changes, things of that nature, versus just parking in that area?
Dave, you don't, he doesn't do anything onsite anyhow. You send all your trucks.
I don't even know.
Even in the rest of the site, he doesn't have a mechanic, so you all get shit out to a garage.
Yep. Yep. So to some extent, the area will be used to park vehicles?
Parking at night, when the crews aren't out, and parking on the weekends. We need space to get vehicles out of the main retail area. We can use it on the outside of there, just to keep safety and traffic flow on the other side.
Presumably, if vehicles will be maintained, it will be.
We better not be a little, no, we try to keep them up.
So at this point, I don't personally have an issue with what's proposed. My bigger concern is the lack of, I think, clarity in dealing with us as a board and the building department as a whole. For instance, at our last meeting, I asked whether you had a work stop order, and you said no, and you clearly didn't, according to the department. You had said that Jim Vanda had given you a sign-off, and everything was good. He said he didn't. There's a number of situations where you told us various things, and we have, from our building department, that that was not the case. I think went down after our meeting last time and said, indicated that this is kind of all set to go. At least, that's the word back that we got. So I have a concern.
We met many times. I met him on the number 27, when he was there. Walked over to the site, and he said yes. I met him at a meeting after the plan was done, before we finalized it. Said you have the right to level it, to cut the trees, and grade it. The third time I met was the Friday before the meeting I had on that Tuesday, on the Monday night, and he said the same thing, three times.
And they've all said that that's not what they said. And they said that they've never, now read from.
When you say "they," it was Jim.
From Jason Harris and from Mr. Vanda, and that there was a work stop order issued back in January.
Yeah. And the question you said was, "There wasn't?"
No, I said there was. Has there been any work stop order issued? And you said, "No, there wasn't."
I never said, "No, there wasn't."
But, you know, according to Mr. Harris, he never authorized any work to be conducted on the property, either verbally documented, or in.
Mr. Harris?
I'm Mr. Harris.
Not Jason Harris?
No.
You're Jason Harris?
No, Jonathan Harris.
He's my brother.
No, I'm sorry. The only one verbally, anything I've done in town procedurally, I go to the building inspector, and I say, "I'd like to do this, or this, or this." And when I did it, he walked over and looked at me. He never said to me, "You know, you probably should submit something to the planning department or planning board." I've never presented anything on the property to the planning board. I've never had to. So with that being said, I I mean, I would think, he would be the one that would say, "This is something that you really should get presented to that." I would never do it without it. I know you said, he said it, he said no, but I'll look in the eyes and tell you. Three times on three occasions, and I mean, I believe, I would never say it. If you look at the site as a whole, it's got a lot of work down there with no planning board stuff. Whether the building inspector said, "Go ahead and do it," I got my doubts, but I think, I think Mr. Seon does what he wants, when he wants, but that's just my opinion. And I'm not gonna, I'm not too proud of this, because I wasn't here the last meeting, but I guess, would you guys end up with a stone retaining wall? That's four feet. A stone retaining wall behind all the houses, would you guys end up with that? I mean, that was built, I mean, that's tall enough to require a builder permit.
We went, we go through the building department, and the building department requested that we show a drawing of the retaining wall and stand by an engineer.
Did you have to stand by an engineer?
Yes, it is. It's on it.
Mr. Carl.
Sure. So a lot of this happened prior to my arrival. I'm sorry, I can't fully inform the board, but stone walls under four feet do not require a permit, so that might have been some of the confusion. So if one of the part-time alternate inspections, inspectors went out there and they saw something that was being done, it's considered landscaping. So again, he probably should have advised Liz. That probably didn't happen. But again, Mr. Seon has come to me prior to doing some new work on his property across the street. And I think that I'm here full-time, I think we're gonna solve a lot of these problems moving forward. Because I immediately go out to any site that there's a problem, and you will receive notice. So my kind words.
I have one question. What's the definition of the stone wall, as opposed to?
Under four feet is not a requirement.
No, as opposed to a cap on an existing hill. There was, he didn't make a stone wall. He made, there was a hill there, and he basically faced it with rock. That's not a stone wall in my idea. A stone wall is what I have. He had my drawings.
Once it gets over a certain height, though, it needs to be structurally.
If it's a stone wall.
Me and you have to have a few.
Is it a stone wall, though? Or is it just a cap on the side of a hill?
I wouldn't call it a cap on the side of a hill.
That's what I call it.
Well, it's a retaining, it's a retaining wall. It's a retaining wall, and it's over four feet. It needs to be engineered.
Well, I'd like to speak for a few minutes about this project. I've had the pleasure for two years to be on the construction.
Sir, one second, please. You need to give me your name and your address.
I am Jonathan R. Harris at 1022 Washington Street. And I have talked to the abutters to this project, and every one of the abutters, which I have, I'm the major abutter, think this is the best thing that's happened. It's improved our properties immensely, and everybody is very thrilled with it, with the work he's done. Also, when he was doing this work, I have a hard time believing that he didn't talk to people in the town, because he contacted me seven times and described every step of the process, what he was gonna do, and what he might have to do, which was blasting. And I said, "You can blast all you want in February, because I'm in Florida," but he didn't blast. So number one, I have a hard time believing that he didn't speak to people, because he speaks to me constantly about this project. And even when the fence went up, he said, "You don't want the fence." He put a fence up. It's beautiful. He put trees up there, probably $10,000 for the trees, which he didn't have to do, to give us some privacy. Actually, I think everything he's done is a benefit to my property, and that's what my neighbors say also. I also had the pleasure of having the bike path put in, which heard nothing from anybody in the town about that, but the contract was very good. It's a fabulous job. I'm actually a beneficiary of these projects. I have actually a beautiful piece of property that's been improved by two projects now.
We get to deal with all the traffic that keeps going through there.
And plus, I don't have cars like this in my house, which is great. I have a river now, because the engineering on the water was a little poor. But honestly, I really have a hard time believing, because like I say, I've spoken to this man. He's come down and seen me, he's called me, he's got me totally involved in this project, and he's done everything he said he was gonna do. And he's also told me about what he wants to do when the, the park that busts to my fence there. He wants to put a fence in there and some landscaping. I can tell you, it's gotta be spectacular. But this is just my unbiased view. But I have talked to all three abutters, and everybody's absolutely thrilled with the work that's been done here. If that's any help for you, that's all I'll tell you.
It is helpful. And so when we had our last meeting, we talked a little bit about the fact that this project didn't rise to the level of requiring a public hearing. And as a result, we weren't really sure how engaged the abutters had been. And we knew that in this forum, the abutters have not been providing an opportunity to appear and speak.
Yeah, well, I understood you guys were gonna come down and maybe look at it, but I don't know if you ever did from our point of view.
Yeah, well, it just, the point was that, that kind of, part of the reason we deferred the meeting was because we wanted to give you an opportunity to come in, you and the other abutters, an opportunity to come in and be able to speak on the public record about what your perceptions of things were, and the fact that you're happy or not happy.
Yeah, all the work around my house is very well done. There's a company that put in the bike path. What a great job they did. And everything that Stefan has done, he did what he was gonna say or better. And like I say, the fact that he talked to the neighbors as much as he did, makes me have a hard time believing that he didn't. He likes to talk. So I can't believe he didn't talk to you, folks, because I'm the in town. As far as town people talk to me about this project, I've never seen any people on my property who are showing any interest in any of these products, projects. So there's my input, if it's worth anything to you.
I think that's legitimate complaint.
Yeah.
We'll have to elevate.
Yeah, because like I say, when that flood came down the street there, nobody from the town contacted me.
I would be horrified to know that that project went on and the abutters were never told about it.
Never talked to anybody, as far as, I am the major abutter of that project, other than him.
You want a board comment on this? Motion to close the public hearing? Motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Want to be abstaining, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good job. I guess you're all done, huh? And I guess, just from my standpoint, any projects I come up with, I'm sure not only will I just get a verbal.
You know what?
Take it to the step where.
Send me an email.
I mean, how about those subdivisions in town? I know procedurally how to do things.
Right.
I never, I never would assume I have to go to a plan.
Right.
I know you're saying, "He didn't say it," but the building inspector said it.
So they asked me to send them an email, and I got an email back from Jason, and I think Jim was quoted in there. I'm not sure what I got back from you, because I don't know what he was on. So.
Jason did the process afterwards.
Yeah, he says that.
And he wasn't involved with, he never said yes or no to me.
No.
It was only one person that did.
Yeah, so I mean, if you want to just send me an email, this is what I'm thinking of doing. I can say, "Just go talk to building inspector four, maybe," you know what I mean? Because the stormwater management has changed. A bunch of stuff has changed since the last, since.
Since the olden.
You're rude.
I get it. No, but I, everything we've done, we go to building inspector, and that's what I did.
Yeah, yeah.
We were on that. We were out there for four months, and we made one noise, and I tried to do things at the right hours. I met neighbors, told them what I was gonna do. He, Mr. Harris, wanted me to take more trees right to his property line, so I intentionally must have launched a tree, you know? Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, there's a miscommunication on the part of who said what, which I had in writing. Maybe that was my fault. I would have done a formal price on that without asking.
I think you're having it full-time.
So technically, brothers.
Inspector here is an alderman.
Yeah. And again, I'm not saying it was. Thank you. Okay, thanks. Have a very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
657 Bickens Street.
So technically, is that one of your offices? Is that one of your offices? I don't know if it's in the west side.
The door is back open, but I've been in town. Yeah, thank you. All right.
Retired? You're done?
Anyone bruised?
Retired?
657 Bickens Street.
Mr. Orley gets here?
Yes. Good evening. The paper, I said, now, for a minute?
Sure.
And start?
Can I send you a copy of the review letter?
Yes, you did.
Okay, good.
It was Friday.
Well, see, I can't remember back to Friday.
Yeah, that's fine.
Lucky I can tell you I had yogurt for breakfast, right?
I can't either. This is the second review.
Yeah, okay. So I just want to let everybody know that David did concern that they are below the one acre threshold for stormwater management, because that was a question I had. So, can you blow it?
Yes, okay. I'm Dan Orway from Orley Associates, and we spent the last month or so really working with the fire department. We did six or seven alternative plans for them. Some moving units, some not moving units. And in our last meeting, they selected one of the plans which you're reviewing tonight. I don't know if anybody from the fire department is here tonight, but.
I actually have emails I'm giving to the chairman right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they approved the plan that is in front of you. We did a, we put tracking software for all three of their vehicles, and that's what these plans are. This is the ambulance tracking vehicle going through the site, a one-way loop, in and out. And it's the size of their ambulance vehicle. The second one was their main engine, tracking that through the site. These three were not all included in the drawings that you have there. I'm just showing you what we went through with the fire department. And this is their tower, and their tower tracking through the site. So all three of their major vehicles work with this roadway system. And this is the one that they approved. And they approved the hydrant location right at this point, right here. So we, because, because of the time that it took to work with the fire department, some of the other issues weren't totally solved. Like Dave, on the drainage and stuff, we, we didn't finish, I think, until three days before the requirement to file with your board, did we finish with the fire department. So we didn't resolve everything, but most things. This is, this plan reflects the changes that the fire department wanted with the one-way loop. So I'll just quickly go through each one, and then we can talk about the review letter. This is the existing condition plan. There wasn't really any major changes in that. This is the site plan, and with the one-way loop, 20-foot, 22-feet, and 20-foot driveway that goes loops through the site. It did show no parking signs, seven no parking signs, exit, entrance, exit only, entrance only. The guest parking, there's five guest parking spaces. These two parking spaces, Dave, goes with this first unit, right here. I didn't have that clearly labeled, clearly labeled that, so these two are dedicated to the first, the existing houses that are now. So we have 17 parking spaces for six units.
You say 17 spaces for six units?
Yes. The existing condition drainage plan didn't change any. The drainage areas for the proposed conditions, of course, did change, because of the driveway, the amount of pavement increased. We added one catch basin right at this location. Now there's two catch basins. This is the utility plan, showing the sewer, water, and the comment that we need a, this is now eight feet. And Dave is requiring there to be 10 feet separation right here. There is separation in any other place. We missed that. This is the one catch basin going to sediment and oil separator to this drainage system, and another catch basin and oil separator to this catch basin. And one of the comments was that there has to be 10 feet from the property line and building foundation for stormwater management. This is the landscape plan. There wasn't any comments about this, but it shows all the species and the major planting, all the grass areas. The wild requirements for paved coverage and lawn areas. This was the detail that we put for the exit to the drain. Right now, all drainage for the site is sheet flow into the parking lot of the, the butter next door, the dental building. Right now, all sheets flows. And so now, we're collecting it, infiltrating it, and letting it out only one place that would go up to the dental office. And it's, and it's about half as much drainage that goes there now, or will go there, than goes there now. So we reduced the drainage by about 50%. These are the construction details, and Dave, I don't think you had any comments about those in this review. We did make this revision of this retaining wall. The others stayed the same. Changed the profile. And these are the same drainage. And these are the same drainage details before. And then the last sheet is the plan. Attorney Riley said of the three plans, make sure we submit to your board the ambulance plan of the fire department that they approved, because it's the widest vehicle, so we showed that. But I included the other three that you saw before with the tower and stuff, the three there. So that submission in front of you, there's the other thing that we couldn't finish was the architecture. Because the fire department, working with the fire department, took a file, in order for us to change the character of the architecture to go to that front sheet. One of the comments of your board was to make sure we picked up the character of the old building, the existing single-family building that's there now, and in talking with the architects, we need to come up with a gambrel idea to make that change, and it's going to take a file. And we only had three days after the fire department approved the plan to do it. So we are going to take, at our next meeting, have revisions of the architecture that will reflect the existing house, so that we have some continuity between the old and the new that we're replacing. I did have a couple of questions. I had a comment about the site lighting. Typically, we use all...all the site lighting is downlighting, and the architect usually picks the lighting. So I'll have him look at that, and do you want the specific fixture shown on the plan? Is that right? We will show that.
That's also important for...I guess it's a responsibility of the building inspector to figure the lighting by law, determine that the proposed lighting meets the by law.
Okay. We need an illumination plan to make sure that the diffracted light doesn't cause any associated trouble.
Okay.
That's what I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's my basic...I know that we're going to come back, maybe at your next meeting, and we'll have the architecture revised, and I'll meet with your office to go over the stormwater management, because there's some issues there. And those are the two main things that I think I charge that we have to revise to evolve.
Are you going to be able to have that done the Thursday before October 3rd? I'm not quite sure what that date is.
I think so. I think so. I know the architecture, because they're working on that now.
Yeah, because I would need it...actually, no, no, I would need it far in advance. How far in advance? Or should they go to the November meeting?
No, I mean, if they...can they have it a week in advance for the meeting?
So that Monday? So I would need it the Monday before the October 3rd meeting.
Because we'd want David to review everything, apologize.
Yeah, that's why he needs...
Yeah, we want David.
Well, I thought if I met with David right now or soon, then I can get going on...
But you need the architecture, you need the drainage, you need the lighting, you need all of that to send to David, so he can look at all of that.
Yeah.
And if you want a conversation with drainage about him like that.
No, that's one of my major recommendations. There are a lot of inconsistencies between the numbers on the plan, the numbers on the drainage calculation, and then numbers from the detail sheet to the plan here. So rather than enumerate all of those, fix this one, change this one, these are suggesting that we meet, and then we can alter each of those items. I think it's more productive for them, for us, than to spend several hours enumerating all the stuff.
Right.
To sit down. So that being said, I'll just jump into my recommendation, although getting into all of the individual things is...the three concerns we had the last time, and we have this time, which Dan has addressed, I think a couple of them, is that number one, fire department. You know that the fire department drives the bus on a lot of these projects, so appears that they've addressed that. That was a big issue, because what the fire department approves really affects building placement, drainage, landscaping. They've got that out of the way. The second comment, which maybe you can address now, is this is going to require a mass DOT access permit. Have you added any...I believe it does.
It's going to require a road opening permit.
Right. Have you discussed with them the site plan and whether or not two curb cuts are going to be acceptable, because of the DOT, and the 20-foot radiuses and the width of the driveways are going to be acceptable?
Well, I haven't been able to, because the fire department approval didn't happen three days before we were submitting, so I can do that now.
What I would suggest is that you don't forget the permit, but get down there and say, okay, this is...
Boy, this is what I've got.
So at the next meeting, or before that, with me, you can say, yes, we discussed it, and there...
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I had called to the Tompkins office before we had the two, the one-way loop. I have...okay, I'll do that.
So then the third thing, I started off my comments with is substantial inconsistencies between plans, and I think you did that from the last meeting.
Yeah.
So I would suggest, since they've got one thing that they're going to address with us, we'll sit down and go through all of those comments, either face-to-face or by zone, and hopefully those can be addressed by week before. And if we've done that, it'll be a fairly simple review of the plans, so you'll look at the numbers.
Okay. If you guys can't do that, can you just get me a letter to continue the project?
Yeah. We'll schedule to do it, and if we can't, I'll send the letter.
Yep, right.
Okay.
How much frontage do you have on this lot, do you know?
I don't have it off my head, but it's like 160 feet or 80 feet.
Should we go...look on the cobbish.
I took it off of the fire department plan, which they wanted very simply. 142.
142?
142.
Yeah, my concern is, I have a few concerns. One, your...both neighbors on both sides, their entrances to their property goes right up to the property line, and both of your entrances are pretty much right up to your property line.
Yeah, we're six feet.
Yeah, so I'm concerned you're going to have one...you're going to have four entrances onto Route 18 within 180 feet, basically. I think that's going to be a challenge for MassDOT, because, you know, your neighbor on this side is kind of basically just running a tight front lawn into an entranceway, which is...I'm not sure how that happens, but it happened. And then there's one in the existing one, and then the medical office next has one that again goes right up to the property line. You're talking about adding another one in there. It's going to get tight fit. The other one is that there's a utility pole. It looks like right about where you want to put one of your entrances.
Yes, I think one pole might have to be moved.
Yeah, so you have to move that?
Yeah.
For the side setbacks, do we have a driveway setback? We have a driveway setback, right? Is it five feet, 10 feet?
It's 10 feet.
10 feet?
10 feet from property line.
Okay. Does this meet that?
No, we're asking for a waiver to six feet, and it is 10 feet in some places, but where we go to the street, that's the street, it narrows down to six.
And in the back, it looks like there's also...the dumpster pad is pretty close to that back lot line?
Yes, yes, it is. But we put in...we have a veg tape buffer there for Dave Fraser in the back here.
Do you feel 17 spaces for six units is excessive? Like, I don't...that might be what we require, or is that what you prefer?
It's a little more than what you require, but Attorney Riley suggested that I put in as much as possible, because that has been a reoccurring problem on other projects. We expanded this area right here.
Now, all the units are two-bedding or three-bedding?
Two-bedding.
Two-bedding?
No, all two-bedding.
All right, so six units, 12 cars, a couple visitors.
It's two and a half cars per unit. So that's...
That's a lot of parking.
Two and a half. No, that's what you're requiring.
2.83, I think, is what we have proposed.
But it is what you...
It's getting silly.
What's up to you? If you wanted to eliminate two spaces, I would...
My feeling is that this is a very cramped proposal, and I'm trying to figure out ways to help you free up some space, and I don't know if it's possible, but, you know, two entrances, two driveways, 17 parking spaces, you moved utility pole, and, I mean, you know, you're saving grace, that wooded strip, that kind of goes off on the L, and that's how you get your lot coverage, not neighbors, but it's really cramped. And I know this is highway commercial, and I know that we have multifamily on highway commercial, but this is just...it's cramped, so...
Well, we have saved a lot of open space right here in the front, right here in the back.
I think it'll look nice in the front. The rest of the site, it's a lot of pavement, a lot of cramp, so...which is a recurring issue that I have with some other...
Part of the reason why we use cobbles in the portion of it, so there wouldn't be parking, just, you know, we have put up these no parking signs, mailbox location right here.
So I'm looking at a map of the project, property next door, the tree line that's there, that's on your lot?
This property line right here, this line right here?
Yeah, that edge.
Yes.
The tree line is on...the trees are on your lot?
Yes. Well, some of them are on theirs. I would...I mean, it goes right along...the trees go right along the property line. Whoever originally had this parcel removed all the trees, but a few.
And then their driveway is right up against the trees as well?
Yeah, their driveway...
It's tight right there.
Well, they actually...it's right there, there's an encroachment onto our property right there.
Yeah.
And they paved the whole front of their lot. We have put a fence up on all three sides, privacy and plantings.
Still got to go to zoning, right? Pardon, zoning what? Still got to go to the zoning what? You still have to go to the zoning?
Yes, yes.
Any idea when? You're trying to get this first and then that, is that...
Yeah, well, yeah, we meet all of your requirements, and then we would go to the PDA.
For the... What do you need from zoning?
Do you want any site line reviewed by the...
Not from zoning, you're getting that here. Do you need any relief? Any zoning relief?
No. Then maybe we don't need, we don't need that.
So that waiver of the side setback?
I was going to say, the side setback waiver, you might need to go to them.
Yeah, that's what I said. That's what I thought.
Why would you should have the side setback waiver?
For the driveway?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'll check that one, but I'm pretty sure.
The MassDOT is going to have a lot of influence over that too, right there, so...
Yeah.
I'll do that.
The radius, that's why I was suggesting to talk to MassDOT.
Yep.
The radiuses for those entrances and exits are actually tangent in front of the lot. Typically, MassDOT wants all of the radiuses at the point of tangency to be in front of your property.
Yes, yes.
And on both ends, that's not the case, so...
Well, I mean, it's them right away.
That's right, and that's going to...
Could be an issue.
Yeah, especially when MassDOT usually wants 30-foot radiuses. I'm not sure. Anyway, that's my advice.
So, by way of clarification, there was...in what you sent back to the board, there was mention of whether or not this is a redevelopment project, and what influence that might have on stormwater design. And I apologize if I missed it earlier, but is that a difference in the result?
Which one?
This is the additional paving above the existing addition. Yeah, I picked that up.
No, I think that would be...
Yes, applicants, design engineers, and again, this project is a redevelopment project, and therefore is exempt from compliance with the standards. Our opinion is the project is not exempt, since the project increases the amount of impervious...so that...so difference in opinion there.
We're in agreement with their opinion. We looked up the stormwater management, and there is one section saying that if you increase the amount of impervious pavement on the area, it can't be a redevelopment project. So we agree with that.
We agree with that.
Okay.
Very good.
Also should be noted, as far as communication goes from the fire department to Chief L, yes, these plans look good from the fire department's perspective, have no concerns. Chief John Cotty, Jack Cotty, Deputy Fire Chief, John Glenn, Jack Glenn, the Deputy Fire Chief, and Captain Cotty reviewed the plans. We have, and they reflect what you've received, where we agree, on what we meant with them. The only difference was them showing five parking spaces near the dumpster on their PDF, and ours showed three. We are fine with five, it won't affect the term ratings, we're concerned.
Yeah, on that plan, we added these last two, because Sean Bradley recommended those.
So we're going to continue this until...
October 3rd?
October 3rd.
October 3rd, and the...
Plans due a week before?
Plans a week before.
And if not, a letter to ask for it to continue in November. Sounds good.
And this could, between now and then, we can get clarity on who it is granting the waiver from side setback.
Motion to move is still next month. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I'm in.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Let me give you a...
Give you a chance to... Down the road. It's noisy.
We have a minute?
Want to take a minute? You guys want to come in and get set up?
Well, at the start of COVID, we had...
Quiet.
We started working from home.
Okay, that's good, yes.
So do I.
You always here.
No, not always.
But last October, I had a failure.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm doing this project from our back.
Okay.
Small things.
Just yours up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, Dave?
Good. After the damage, all she's...
Oh, is that it, right?
One of those ones in that square.
Yeah, I did 30 something weeks, that's great.
Which one is he has?
I'm the employee.
No.
When it breaks out, what is it?
Yes, for sure, he's passed away.
Yeah, he is.
He was old then.
Yeah, he was. Thank you.
Yep, see you.
See you later.
This is still 1,000 degrees. It feels like it, you're right.
I'm told we're going, it's gonna be 46 degrees at night.
Where you going?
Uh, going up to Salisbury, Vermont.
Very nice, yeah.
Right.
And it's alcohol?
That's what my wife says, the weather forecast is up there, it's gonna be 46.
46? Sign me up.
Glad we have a heater in our camera. Or, my wife is Vermont.
Hey, cool.
Me too.
Kathy's going back home.
She wants to walk, we will, so, don't care.
We're just a flatland who married a Vermont girl.
Along, you going for?
We can go, we can have. This is a nice time to take vacation because families with schoolchildren are in school.
They're all on the way, yeah.
So, I think next year, we'll go for a simple go in June, and the days are longer.
I like that. We did, um, we went to Maine this year, because it's New Year's. Great, it, the resort that we stayed at was at like half capacity, because everybody's home with their kids and stuff, we have the, the front of the place, it was fantastic.
Well, we've been going to this campground for years, Waterhouses, and very nice, it's more or less an adult, I mean, there's a campground down the street called Campus World, which is, you have to separate the campsites with sheets.
Oh, wow.
You know, I mean, so if you have families with children, that's a part of the place you wanna go.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
And I got a drive-through spot too, which is good, too. We have family that are, also, County Fair up there, that's...
What? Very cool.
Time to go.
All right. I think we're all back, Mr. Chairman.
All right. This is a public hearing, Defender of Subdivision, Chain Park Path, on 40 Rockland Street.
All right, give me one second, you need to read the hearing notice.
Yes, indeed.
I think the first time you've done this.
Yes, indeed. Power of the Chair, Public Hearing Notice. The Avenue Plan, water hole, a public hearing on Tuesday, September 6, 2022, the Avenue Town Hall, 500 Glanville Way, at 6:30 PM on a Defender of Subdivision Plan application entitled, Subdivision Plan for Chain Park Path, prepared by Laura W. Lee Mann Jr. and Maria Mann by Strong Point Engineering Group, 340 Manly Street, Unit 2, West Richwater, Mass. The plan is dated August 12, 2022. Property is owned by W. Lee Mann and Maria Mann, 140 Rockland Street, Abington, Mass. Property is located on Assistant's Map 22, Lot 14A. The hearing will be held at Abington Town Hall, 500 Glanville Way, plans may be reviewed at the office of the Town clerk at the Abington Hall, Monday through Thursday, 3:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Friday, 3:00 AM to 12:15 PM. Please hear us chairman, Tuesday, August 23, and Tuesday, August 30, 2022.
Thank you.
So, we would invite you to present, if you would identify yourselves, please.
Absolutely. Uh, for the record, Eric Dais, registered professional engineer with Strong Point Engineering. Uh, he is tonight with Lee Mann, um, representing the Mann family, as was read into the record, um, for what we're calling Chain Park Path at 140 Rockland Street. Um, brief summary upfront, this is a three-lot proposed subdivision with a private way, um, just for the scene, you certainly may all have the replacements out in the area. Basically, the private way is to create frontage, and it's above our common driveway. In fact, in this case, more than, I think, almost any other, it mimics the existing driveway that's on the site. So, in the existing condition now, the Mann's house is right here in this location, way back from the road, and they did, through a prior permitting process with the Conservation Commission, they did get permission to put in utilities in the gravel driveway, um, to, actually, it was proposed, it was allowed to be paved, and it just gravelled to this point now, because they knew they had further plans to develop. What you'll see, if you look at the plan, and certainly if you walk, they're absolutely beautiful piece of land. Wetland resources here and there, though, ledge outcropping all over the place, so the driveway kind of weaves its way between some wetland, um, resource areas, between some ledge outcrops, things like that, and we're proposing to maintain basically the same footprint of the driveway for the proposed roadway moving forward. We have asked for some waivers for the roadway, which we can certainly go through line by line if we do want to, uh, but I think that they're what this board has seen in the past with similar projects that are intended to be private, um, for smaller residential subdivisions like this. The intent of this, full disclosure, is basically a, a family compound. Mr. Mann would like to, um, cut off lots two and three for one, each one for each of his children, um, and so this remaining private imperturbativity is not an issue for us. We're not proposing sidewalks, we're proposing Cape Cod burn, which we do have a support letter from the DBW on, um, we are not proposing a full roundabout here, we are, instead of proposing a hammerhead, which we have a support letter from the fire department on, um, all of the lots conform to zoning, so we're not looking for any relief in that aspect.
Yeah, can you help me with that distinction?
The hammerhead versus the roundabout? So, what you'll see is at the end of this here, we do have, the right-of-way is circular, as if we were going to actually build a paved roundabout here, but instead of doing that, what, a paved turnaround, what we decided is that we will use the, the proposed driveways to form sort of a hammerhead, so an emergency vehicle can come in, do a three-point turn, and come back out. Uh, it just saves on pavement area, a little less disturbance to the site, a little less pavement area that we need to deal with when it comes time for, uh, small water management and things like that, um, and it fits the character a little bit better, because this is not, never gonna be a roadway, per se, that somebody's gonna walk down with sidewalks and things like that, we don't really wanna encourage that sort of behavior either. So, that's really the gist of this. We are in front of the Conservation Commission right now, we're at their last meeting, we are scheduled for their meeting in October, their first meeting in October. They've asked us to go through and do a couple of, um, improvements to the wetland flagging and things like that, which we're working on now. Stormwater management for the project, we have done, basically, it, we've incorporated as much LID type of features as we can. We have very shallow groundwater here, we have a ton of ledge all over the place, so we're not proposing to do a traditional closed drainage system that's gonna consist of manholes and pipes and all of that. Uh, frankly, the effort associated with it would be crippling. So, what we've done is we have proposed to sheet flow the roadway along its natural path to a couple of stormwater depressions that we have near the wetland areas. The water will pool that way, they'll pool in those depressions, they act almost as a fallback, and then they will eventually overtop and go into the stormwater, um, the wetland areas that they go into right now, after having received at least some degree of treatment, uh, before doing so. We do have a letter from Dave, um, I don't wanna take the wind out of the sails, there are certainly some technical details that we need to add to the plan, but I think by and large, it's a positive review letter. Hey, really, that's the gist of it, I, I'd be glad to, you know, I can continue to draw it on, or I can just turn it over to the board and answer any questions that you both may have.
The, uh, current site conditions?
Yes.
What up there is paved, what up there is gravel, what's up there is dirt?
Sure, we go after these as soon as possible. So, coming in now, you come off the road, this entire trunk down to here, and about, I'd say, two-thirds of the loop up to the house are all gravel. There's only pavement in front of the house in this location here.
Okay.
And the gravel is admittedly hard-packed, it's been there for a while, there's really not many water back into the ground, it's pretty impervious.
And anything around the back of the house?
Nothing around the back of the house. There is a little leg right here that's gravelled, the parking of equipment and vehicles in this location here.
Okay. Um, and as you come up the driveway, it bends off to the left a little bit?
It bends off to the left a little bit, yes.
So, what is up there, just kind of, nothing?
Uh, just open area right now, um, you can see that the squidward line is the tree line that's there, it's open area. I think at one time, this was gonna be maybe used as a, um, a storage yard for Lee's business, um, but since that time is kind of passed, and we're looking at a residential subdivision now, there won't be a continued use of the property.
Okay.
We're requesting six waivers.
We are requesting a number of waivers, and I think, um, to summarize, and certainly we can go through them, um, the waivers are very much to do with the roadway layout itself, um, eliminate, um... Eliminate, um, sidewalks, uh, things like that, but certainly, sir, if you'd like, we can go through each one of those.
Well, it's pleasure, you guys like to go through these waivers?
Another quick question.
Yeah.
So, photos from way back when showed, there was kind of like a dirt path, I think it used to be used for riding for dirt bikes or something, a long time ago.
Yes.
There was a path that connected to, you know, three or four houses down, is that accurate?
Yes, that was years ago.
Yeah, is that still active, or is that the kind of...
No, that was a paper road.
Yeah, it was, okay.
So, the people that own behind me, where that, that path you're saying?
Yeah.
Where the house that burned down, I don't know if you guys remember that, there was a paper road through there, and then the guy that originally kept cutting through that paper road, so I bought it from the, she bought it because she didn't want the guy cutting through that paper road, and then I ended up buying it, she made it so it'd be two lots where her kids lived, and I bought that lot from her.
Okay. This wasn't sure what the current situation was, that's all?
We're pretty well self-contained at this point.
All right.
Uh, maybe we can look through the waivers quickly? First of all, we've already done...
Yeah, we've done a couple of them, um, I do have the waiver request letter here, I think you've all received the copy of this waiver request letter?
Correct.
I'll just blast through these real quick. Uh, the first waiver is the...
Before you start, just, I should note as well, that in Dave's response back, um, our opinion, the waivers may be granted and are consistent with the subdivision control of designing and constructways, consistent with their anticipated use, so you've had a chance to look at these and relatively comfortable with them.
Yeah, and there's similar to, uh, I was involved with one other project review for the board, um, down the street, actually, Pusser Terry Way.
Oh, yeah, yep.
And there's several similar waivers. I, I looked at that plan to see if the two plans were pretty much consistent with their own, and, and they were. Pusser Terry's actually had some more waivers that they weren't asking for, or needed.
We've done a few others in town, too, uh, aside from that one, there's been similar Roslin on the other side of town and things like that, similar type of waiver, similar type of setup, that matter, but I'll blast through these. The first one is to not do a fully paved cul-de-sac, but do a hammerhead instead. Um, the second one is the requirement to meet the standard roadway cross-section. Basically, we are proposing waivers that would affect your standard roadway cross-section, so with regard to widths and sidewalks and things like that, so that's kind of a blanket one that ties into a few of the others. Uh, requirement, number three, requirement to provide a sidewalk and a planting strip. Um, again, we do not anticipate this being a road, and we don't want it to be a road that people are gonna walk down, um, so we prefer not to provide a sidewalk. Requirement for the paved way centerline to match the right-of-way centerline. So, this is a product of the fact that we have wetland resource areas and ledge outcropping all over the place. We had to sort of take the, the paved portion of the roadway and meander it a little bit within the centerline that we, within the right-of-way that we were able to create, to, just to dodge some of the ledge. The last thing we wanna do, if we can avoid it, is be out here, hammering through ledge or the last thing to ledge that we don't have to. So, the pavement stays within the right-of-way, but it just, rather than them having an exact match to the centerline, we meander a little bit within them. So, that's what that one's about. Um, requirement for a minimum width of 22 feet, we're proposing 20 feet. Uh, we feel that just because of the level of service associated with this, a 10-foot lane in either direction, this is, like you said, gonna be a family compound, um, and I don't think that fire is, is chimed in with any negative response to that particularly.
Just, just as a comment, I don't think you need a waiver. I think if you look at the dimensional standards for whatever is a local road, it is 22 feet.
We, we are asking to go to 20, with a berm on each side.
Okay.
So, we're asking for a 20-foot width with a 1-foot berm on each side, which ultimately comes to 22, so it'd be a 20-foot traveled way. I don't know if there's a distinction in the bylaw there, but that's a good point, that's something that we can take a look at, and maybe eliminate the need for that waiver if, if possible. Requirement to provide vertical granite curving, we're requesting Cape Cod berm, DBW has actually indicated in a letter to the board that they would prefer Cape Cod berm, in this case. Number seven is, is kind of a redundant one, is a requirement to provide a sidewalk. Um, number eight is a requirement to provide a closed drainage system, as, for the reasons that we talked about before, we have very shallow groundwater, we have a bunch of ledge, um, installing structures and things like that, which require a good amount of earthwork, a ledge removal and disturbance, and frankly, it probably would be in the water table, so we've opted for more of a surface LID, country drain style drainage design. Requirement to provide a fire alarm box is number nine. I just don't know that we do that in this town on subdivisions this size. Yeah, I thought you were rid of that one, but... Yeah.
I don't think it's been required.
I don't think it has. Um, and then the last one is just a requirement to provide street trees and a street tree easement. Um, again, it, it, it almost warrants a sidewalk, the site's beautiful, um, I think when you get out there, it really speaks for itself, and I don't know that there's necessarily a need on private way like this for additional street trees up both sides. So, those are the waivers in a nutshell, all related to the geometry of the road, basically.
How close is the current road, well, actually, how wide is the current road?
Um, it, it varies in width, but it's approximately 18 feet in width now.
So, you have to basically widen it a little bit?
Widen it up.
Formalize it a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, how close is it to the boundary line?
Uh, that road, um, in the existing condition, is really within, I'd say, at this point here, within about five or six feet of the boundary line. It really hugs that, and if you look at what we're proposing for our roadway layout, we are keeping that boundary line as the right-of-way line, so there's no separation between the boundary and the right-of-way.
Do you need a relief from that, too? Because I think, just, as we talked about, I think we have a 10-foot setback.
Do we need a relief from that? Is that something? No, it's not a driveway.
It's not a driveway, it would be a right-of-way.
Subdivision road, I don't believe subdivision regulations have a requirement for an offset.
Subdivision road racing the way up to the property line?
The layout. In fact, you want, you want it to go up to the property line, the layout. Actual pa, the actual pavement, I don't believe you have a regulation that requires it to be a certain distance up the property line. And the regulation we talked about before is related to site development, not subdivision. And if you think about it, if you, if they were doing sidewalks there, the sidewalk would be right up to the engine line, and the pavement and the road would be five-foot sidewalk plus a grass strip, so the subdivision road would be within, within eight feet, 10 feet of the property line.
Yes, of the subdivision to building, not an existing property that's already there. You know, like, it's, it's going between an existing property line. Yeah, I understand that, yeah, roadway, you wanna go right up to the...
Right.
...house that you're building, to the front yard, so, yeah, of course, the, the road's gonna go up to the property line, but...
I'm not sure.
If I, if I go down a subdivision, the road's going down the middle of the subdivision, and the easement on the sides go right up to the property line of the houses that's being built, but if I'm entering the subdivision, that roadway usually isn't right on the property line of the flooding property.
Sure is.
What essentially happens is that by doing this, this piece back here is, belongs to Tom, I haven't taken, but this piece here belongs to Johnson, this actually becomes a corner lot, in that case, so it, they would be, they would actually have frontage along this private way, in this case, uh, which is preferable. If we were to offset this, there would be a little strip of land through here that's not part of the roadway and not part of Johnson's property, it's called a spike strip, uh, and they're actually, I don't know if they're illegal, but they're certainly frowned upon, uh, which is why we push the right-of-way right up to this, so this becomes a corner lot, um, but it doesn't change any of the frontage or setback requirements under the current zoning.
Regarding the whole issue with granite curving, if this is going to be the trend, uh, currently... currently it's our bylaw to require granite curving. But if we're going to keep getting requests from DPW and FIRE, then we need to go and make that change. I don't, I, right now, we're being asked to go against town meeting. Now, town meeting voted to have granite curving. So if the official word from DPW and FIRE is they don't want granite curving anymore, then let's go to the more select in the town manager, town meeting, and make it optional. I guess, not your issue, but a future one. It's just, I don't feel comfortable continuing to either, either we're going to override town meeting or we're going to override our fire chief and DPW. So it's kind of like-
I think it's, we've only done it in special conditions with, like, Pusiteri's because of the size and-
But DPW's asked for it on all fronts. Like, they asked for it on, it's expensive to replace.
The granite curving also holds on that.
The others, berms and one paving, it's a self-chipped up.
The planning board can do that on their own by holding public hearing to amend subdivision regulations. Doesn't require the selectmen or the town meeting to do any of that. The planning board can do it on their own motion by holding a public hearing and-
Even though it's on the bylaw?
And I have a whole folder of stuff that people want changed.
Yeah, there's no-
So it's in the pile of stuff for us to talk about later.
All right. So, and that makes sense for the DPW. Do we have any, I don't think we have like a fire department asking to pay though?
That way, because they can drive over it. If it's granite curving, they can't drive over it.
They can drive over it, okay.
Yeah, and that's the other concern. How, do you know how wide we made Pusiteri Way?
Yeah, I do. It's 16 feet.
What, 16 feet?
Plus Cape Cod berm.
How many feet, I'm sorry?
16.
16?
The concern we've heard-
It's only two lots, but-
Is that the ambulances are so wide now that they need a certain width road to get down them.
Sure.
It's not even the fire trucks, it's the ambulance.
Sure.
So if you have a 22-foot road, as we're learning, and there's a car parked along the road, and I'm not saying this would happen here, but if there's a car parked along the road, the ambulance can't get around in the roadway. So they're asking specifically for a certain width for roadways.
Makes sense.
When we did the O'Neill division, so it ended up not happening, and we were buying the land, but they had the bridge going over the wetlands. It was concerned with how wide that's going to be because of the fire truck and ambulance access.
Can't post no parking signs again?
We have to post no parking signs. One other note about the street trees is I know you're not proposing any additional clearing of vegetation.
I don't believe we are. No, I don't believe we are. All of the areas that we are proposing to working are currently cleared. So we're going to leave all the trees out there right where they are.
Because we cleared them four years ago or five years ago.
That's correct, under a prior order of conditions.
Right. All right. Yeah, I'm very curious what conservation's going to tell you, because I know that you're kind of threading a needle with some of that there. So.
No, that makes sense. And we, you know, expected the board would have some apprehension or at least consideration for CONCON until they vote. So certainly, we know that.
So my feeling personally is I think it's great to create these family compounds. It's so much easier in life to really have family there. Unfortunately, families don't always live there. At some point, could be 20 years, could be 50 years, at some point, they'll, other people start to buy in. So it's like, what happens? I think, didn't we just have a situation where one of these private-
Multiple situations?
Yeah, where all of a sudden the families no longer live next to each other and now the, you know, some of these issues pop up. That's kind of what-
The shit back, you had to no longer as much fun.
Yeah.
No, that makes sense. And certainly, family compound or not, this would be private, be subject to an HOA to maintain the roadway. And that would have to be basically the restriction of perpetuity so that if somebody outside of the family ever did move in, they know they're buying into it.
Before we leave this subject, I did send you guys an email that the Veterans Agent would like to name this road after the one last veteran killed in action we have on the list. Because we're not sure how many more roads are going to get built. I know Attorney Riley will sometimes make an argument for the fact that it's a small private road and blah, blah, blah. But I don't, I don't know.
Is there a meaning behind the name?
Oh, behind Jay Palm.
Really, is there a particular reason why we named this thing Jay Palm?
I just kind of named it that, so I liked it. What is the proposed name that the vets are asking for?
Henry C. Hurst.
Henry C. Hurst.
Killed in action in World War I.
Do you take any issue with that?
I don't have an issue with it. Do you think something like that would maybe, yeah, I assume we're going to have a subdivision?
I'm kind of, I don't want to force it upon you, because-
Right, but I, you, I mean, I don't know where we're going to have another subdivision, right?
Oh, I'm sure they're going to find a way.
Water, water, water?
You might want to save it for a larger subdivision.
That's what I-
Well, that's, 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 I get that's the argument, but I just don't-
This is more of a-
I mean, the last large subdivision we had come in here was Veterans Place. That's the last one you guys approved. So I think that's the thinking behind this.
But like Bob said, this is a driveway.
Yeah, basically.
Now, I want to see if something's wrong.
That's what I would think.
But a veteran injured, I'm not going to step on his stuff.
That's all right, it's up to you guys, yes or no?
You can tell that we're pretty certain it's going to be another one.
Okay.
That'll be a public road.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, my thought, with a public road.
Okay.
Or you take an existing public road, maybe.
There you go.
Who's this Washington guy?
So that change from the cul-de-sac to the hammerhead and turning radius and missing vehicles, is that something that the fire department has seen?
The fire department saw an earlier iteration of it, and they did provide a letter that says that they're in favor of such a design. I believe they were-
The proposed design?
Oh, the proposed design.
What comment?
I don't know that they've made comments specific to this layout yet. I believe, and Misha can certainly confirm, that they are transmitting the set of the plans. Is that correct?
They are.
And I don't think we received word.
I didn't get a response letter.
Okay.
That doesn't necessarily mean anything.
No, so we can be sure and follow up with it.
Right, they may not have had an opportunity.
Yeah, because we talked about going down and turning around and backing out, and that's-
They drove up there and they did say that that was fine to get the vehicles in and out with that letter that I received on, yeah, that was-
Yeah, the only things I have about the Cape Cod berm that I have-
They want that too, because, so the ties don't get sliced if they run for FIRE.
Right, I mean, I have that, but it doesn't say anything about the hammerhead versus the, it just only talks about the Cape Cod berm.
Well, let's make a point to follow up directly with FIRE and we'll get something for the board. Make sure that they are okay with this.
John Nodall, in August, said, "We still need to look at the hybrid locations and other access building location proposals before making a final decision." That was attached.
Really, I don't think I've seen that.
We got a call after you were CC'd on it.
I was, really?
Yep, August 23rd. Liz Inchon, the Fire Department's reports of Cape Cod doors. However, we need to still need to look at the hybrid locations.
Okay, well, let's follow up on that as well. Make sure that we're good to go.
Were you, did you have streetlights proposed?
We had not proposed streetlights. Assumption being, A, it's kind of a driveway. B, I don't think the town would want to put the bill on.
We wouldn't, it's a private way.
Yeah, we don't want to put the bill on.
My comment regarding streetlights was simply to put in to speak to the Fire Department, Coast Department, and see if they want a streetlight in the intersection of Rockton Street.
This is tied into sewer, right?
This is tied into sewers.
Yes.
Are you on a water list?
Yes, well, it's true, this, we have to read this there right now.
Yeah, and once you hear back from CONCON, their thoughts and Fire Department, that's kind of the main outstanding ones, I think. That forms a lot of what we have to figure out.
So do we want to continue this, this phase? October, I give those certification numbers?
If I'm unsaying correctly, it sounds like the board would be comfortable, wants CONCON to weigh in before they're willing to make a decision on this. And I believe we're, do you know when, when everyone's first CONCON meeting in October is?
Probably October 4th.
Right, I think you're right. So we'll come back as soon as that's over.
So can we get a letter from you continuing till November?
Yeah, we can definitely get you an extension of time.
Okay.
When is the first available October planning board meeting? That's the third? You're telling me, yeah.
I know. That's how I knew when the fourth was.
Aw, man.
I know.
Let me ask this. Between now and then, we are going to have sidewalks with the Conservation Commission. And that'll give us adequate time to deal with FIRE and DPW. Does it make sense for us to come back on the 3rd, knowing that CONCON won't have formally voted until the 4th, but if we're in good shape, perhaps the board could vote and include a subject to CONCON approval condition in their decision?
I don't have a problem with that. CONCON's going to change, and we'll do that.
We'll come back to you. If CONCON makes a major change of any substance at all, we'll come back to you with the-
I'd like to think you'll feel one further along by then.
I think we will. And then that just stops us from coming back to your meeting on the 17th. Helps us save two weeks on timeline, if that makes sense to the board.
All right, so you're going to get the hybrid locations confirmation on the hammerhead?
Yep.
And the streetlight confirmation with the Fire and Police Department that, you know, they do or they don't want to have one at the bottom of the street?
Yep.
Bottom of the driveway?
Sure.
And the fire alarm box?
Fire alarm box, which I don't think are required anymore.
I don't either.
We'll make sure.
Yeah.
And, yeah, so if we come back on the 3rd, I think honestly, after we have our sidewalk with CONCON, we're going to have a very good sense of which way they're going. And we can have all this other stuff wrapped up, get plenty of time for that too, so I think that makes sense.
Right, if you can just shoot me an email continuing till the 3rd.
You got it.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other questions that we can answer for the evening? Well, thank you all for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
So make a motion to continue.
Continue until, until the minute.
I'll ask the favor.
Bye, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right. And I think last but not least, Ms. Target. She's giving you revised plans. I asked them to print them out. And then I gave you, I gave you guys a revised letter from Mike dated September 9th.
Good night. I just want to say, this is Carmichael, I've been on the board for eight years. This is the first time a building commissioner's been here.
Well, let me say, I'm happy to be here and I'm thrilled to be a member of the community. So I hope to be a good ambassador for the town, so. Please send me invites, I don't plan on meeting every time, but if you would send me an invite on special meetings that you'd like me to be here.
Your input is very valued, at least.
Like the Christmas card?
No, no, just on the bigger, our initial meetings with people, we wanted input, a bigger party, so. Sorry, I can give you an impact statement as well, so.
Past requests were met with no thank you, so.
Well, I'm happy to be here.
Mike, can you identify yourself, please?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Hammond, members of the board. My name is Lisa Wong-Tomacorn, also a professional engineer. We are working with Target, and I am here to discuss the scope of work for the site plan review for the drive-up expansion at the existing Target retail store located at 385 Center Avenue. The project involves site relocation of the existing drive-up stalls and the expansion of the designated drive-up stalls. The drive-up stall serves guests who place order online for Target team members to deliver to their vehicles. In addition, there will be one parking lot shade canopy covering over the 12 drive-up stalls. The reason why we did print out a revised set, because our previous drawing had canopy over the drive aisle, but we were saying that we're not going to have it proposed, we just changed it for a sense of clarity. So the canopy is only over the drive-up aisle stall. So the proposed improvement consists of restructuring 32 existing parking stalls into 24 new drive-up stalls, and it includes 12 double-sided post-on-channel drive-up signs that head of each stall. And also includes the six-foot walkway between the parking stalls for team members to access each stall. The canopy will include LED lighting design and Wi-Fi. And the canopy height, the minimum clearance, is 12 and a half feet. And the parking spaces for the drive-up stalls is 10 feet by 20 feet.
Do you remember what the height was before?
The drive-ups of the canopy. I would have to double-check, did it change?
I'm not sure.
The clearance, it said, I think it's going to be more of a spec, and the clearance, minimum height, is 12 and a half feet.
Okay.
There were about a dozen existing drive-up spaces, are those staying?
So we're going to be relocating it and shifting it to the east. So it's going to be an aisle over to the east, and the existing ones are going to be converted back to standard parking spaces. So there's going to be a row of parking. There's also going to be a marked crosswalk for the team member to safely walk across the drive aisles, and then also paving markings for stopars.
But you're taking, I guess it would be 36 existing and turning them into 24 pickup?
32 existing parking stalls to 24. And then in between the parking stalls, there would be a six-foot walkway for the team members.
And that's because a little extra space to help open doors, get stuff in, et cetera?
Exactly. And the average time for a drive-up user is about two minutes, the average time. So when someone pulls into their park, the drive-up parking space, uses their app, tells them that they are here at this designated spot, it's about two minutes for the team member to reach, to get the information, and then bring it back, bring the stuff to their vehicles.
You are still well within your parking requirement of drive-up, I mean, that lot is never full. It's never three-quarters full.
I've never seen anything like this before, as far as Targets go. Is this a prototype or is this something that you're putting in a lot of stores?
We are adding a lot of canopies over the stores, especially because of the weather conditions. Because it rains, snows here, and the sun, it's definitely a lot. It enhances it, and also helps more vehicles identify where are the drive-up stalls.
The existing area, is that more in the areas where you have the landscaping in between, or is it more just the walkways in between the existing?
The existing one does not have the landscaping, no. It's going to be the proposed one, it's going to be the landscaping. So just east of the parking lot.
But there's no drainage structure underneath it that you're building on top of, or?
Not that I'm aware of, not that I'm aware of.
Making sure we're not taking away a drainage swale or something, I don't think it is.
I don't think we are. It didn't say anything regarding the scope of work when I was looking at the notes.
The power for the LED lighting would come from the store proper?
I would have to double-check regarding how are they doing their LED lights. That is something that I'm not familiar with, but I can definitely double-check that regarding where are they-
Yeah, where's the power coming from?
Where's the power coming from? It makes sense that it is coming from Target, though, yeah.
Are the, is the drive-up sign in, I'm sorry, when you're ready. Are the drive-up signs that are going to be on the canopy designed to be visible from the street?
From along Center Avenue?
Yeah.
I think it's going to be bright when you enter the parking lot, that's when you'll see it.
Because if they were, that might, then would qualify as another sign, and then it's a whole sign by law, I think.
Yeah, it's once we enter the Target parking lot, the driveways.
Yeah, it looks like. We were just over there today, we were trying to envision one of these. We were just over there today. We were trying to envision where these, maybe the religion that goes towards when you drive.
Yeah, just to the east. Just a drive-al over.
My wife is watching this, Kathy, now you don't.
Was this reviewed? Do we have this reviewed?
Yes. Was reviewed by PNP? You have a letter dated September 9th. I forwarded on the revised plan.
Uh, given the oral, right, it's not much. And it didn't raise any issues.
It's definitely PNP now, the chair of the 20 more, isn't it?
Yeah, I guess.
It's just kind of an auto fill thing for having to know.
I can't see too much of PNP anymore.
No, but Dave is mostly retired.
So, do you find him one?
Well, I, he had a lot of projects this month, so. I try to call him before I give him stuff to see if it's gonna fit into his.
Retirement schedule?
Retirement schedule.
We had a pretty shifty exit, right?
Right.
I didn't even see him go.
He was excited. He came down for me, didn't he? And got stuck in the traffic.
Oh. I don't have any issues on the questions. If PNP doesn't raise any things to be resolved. Because it means you did a good job. But.
Our recommendation before we close the public hearing, approve the updated application.
PNP loves finding flaws, so I mean, if they didn't find a flaw, you're, you're doing a great job.
The other comments?
Construction, must be a temporary loss of some additional spots for construction.
Uh, or just gonna be on the additional aisle, but it's gonna be around like, I think when I was coordinating with the civil people, I think it's about like four, six months of construction. And the maintenance of traffic, yeah, it should, it should be that disturbance. It really should not be that much of disturbance for the existing parking.
We're not doing this on Black Friday, right?
They're disturbing their own clients as fast as possible.
So, you want to get the answer to the question about where the power's coming from? Would that make a difference to you before we start to approve this?
I think I, this was one of the ones that Liz did send out to me and I did comment on. I was curious about solar. Are you gonna be adding that at some other time? Will we be charging canopy, charging toilets underneath?
So, the other lady that.
Casey.
Casey said there would be no charging stations.
Okay.
Because I think some of them kinda look like that on the plans.
It does, because usually when you see these canopies go up, their sole intent is for solar. And then there's charging canopies underneath. So, I don't know if that was phase two, or if they're thinking about it further down the line. Not, you should prepare for it because they probably won't wanna add for it. And then the lateral load, because they're gonna be in a parking space, I think these, the bottom base columns need to be designed to take that vehicle impact at 6,000-pound lateral impact at two feet above ground.
That's, that's standard. That's what we'd be looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve as presented.
Close the public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Now, motion to approve.
Uh, did you wanna make what the building commissioner just mentioned as a?
As a.
To find out about the power.
We can have that as far as conditions of approval.
It's contingent upon.
I would assume not getting the power if he doesn't like it.
Right? The power for.
I promise I won't.
Well, Liz, you wanna read the conditions, please?
Alright, so, to approve the plan dated 9/8/22, contingent upon conditions in the PNP associates' letter dated 9/9/22, which I don't think there are any. And contingent upon determining the power source for the LED lights in the canopy. And then you can have them make sure that.
I'll take care of the rest of it on my end when they issue the permits. I'm fine with that.
Motion to be made, second? Alright, all those in favor?
Alright.
Thank you for your time and we'll follow up with you. I'll have you to follow up with us.
Great. Thank you for your patience.
No, thank you for having me.
Great.
I'm gonna slip out.
Alright, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Alright, nice meeting you all.
See you tomorrow. Okay, I don't know where you guys wanna go back to. Thank you.
Talk about the 99.
Yeah, if you wanna do that, I can get an email out to them tomorrow. I sent you guys all the self, self-field redevelopment letter.
It's awesome. It's commercial.
Right. The letter is relatively ambiguous as to where that site actually is.
On the corner of 18 and.
It is. I printed the plans out there.
So, the nicest part of the development is where they're putting this.
Right.
And they're putting the parking right along the roadway. Which is why personally, I'd rather say this is a stupid spot for it. And I don't know what you're thinking, and please don't put it here.
You can do that.
That's my personal view. Honestly, it's, this is the, this is the main entrance. It's the scenic entrance to this development. It's one of the nicest parts of this development. They wanna put, replace basically all of it with a parking lot in a building. And I think it's a, would degrade the site entrance. I don't understand why they can't put this inside of. Six stories, you're gonna see it.
Access to booty team program.
Put it 100 yards down the road. But I mean, this is the, this is the nicest part of the entrance. This is kind of where, what you put on the postcards as you're marketing it out is the entrance way. And they're gonna rip it all up and replace it with, you know, parking spaces.
Well, look at all the high-rise buildings. They're building right there now, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't think this, I understand they don't wanna turn down commercial development, but I mean, I think this is just pound foolish.
In the town of Waymouth, this seems to be the greatest concentration. High-rise buildings.
I can't even know.
Town.
They recently changed their zoning within the last couple of years to allow for that mixed-use 118. And I'm not sure if that included changing the height of those buildings that bust off.
Feel like I'm going down Route 1.
I know.
It's, it's south Waymouth for a reason. Because most people in Waymouth don't see it.
Right.
It affects Abington much more than it affects south Waymouth.
Well, I've been going to the vet there with a great frequency lately.
I don't know. As you're heading towards where the vet is, there's the one on the right-hand side that's completed, like beside the MBTA parking lot.
I missed the Maygol.
Yeah, and that one used to be on the left-hand side.
That was very nice, right?
That's, uh, that would be senior husband.
Oh, really?
The one I received.
So, what's the board's pleasure? Do I send a letter saying we should move it further inside?
Aesthetically, we don't like it.
Yes.
Aesthetically, what's that word?
Right, the message. I think the location degrades from the long-term needs of the property that nobody's, I mean, that it would be much better suited inside of the complex instead of right on the corner. Replacing the landscaping and with parking and a building, I just don't think is in the long-term benefit.
Am I correct in assuming that, that we've received this, that this is a courtesy?
Yes.
I would assume. You really don't have any, no?
Uh, can we CC our representative to the?
Yep.
Our new representative?
Hi, new representative?
Who is the new representative?
Roger Woods.
Oh, that's right.
Discussion of MS4 Stormwater Management.
Alright, it's been a little bit, so I can't remember what I sent you guys. But I received an email from Sanborn Head, who, the two engineers who work there, worked on a stormwater management permit. And granted, the heavy lift of that, as we know, goes with DPW. But they went through and they read all of our documents, all of our, all of our bylaws, conservation, everything. And they came up with a chart that tells us what needs to be changed. We have several years to do this.
Well, what needs to be changed and what we should consider?
Yes. So, the existing requirement and the recommendations under the stormwater permit that they would like to see adopted to keep us compliant with the MS4 permit.
But let me be clear on that. So, again, consider, 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 consider.
Yes.
And so, if some of these changes, if not, have other kinds of ramifications, then that change is considered to, you should.
To mandatory.
Right, yeah.
I actually have a meeting with John Stone and Stephen Reich from Sanborn Head I think in a week or so. And that's sort of the question I'm gonna ask. I have to say that the documents they drafted for the town's adoption, when we did the stormwater manager, were really good and, you know, compliant. They're, they're very good at trying to keep us compliant, yet keep everybody happy with what we need to do. I looked through this quickly. I didn't, nothing really joked out me, actually. I thought for Rick, he'd be very excited because a lot of it is a low-impact development that they want us to develop, to adopt.
I, I didn't have the brain power to go through each one, but there's definitely a couple of things on here I've been thinking about, like water bio swales.
Yep, rain gardens.
Rain gardens. The one at Bridgewater they have is really great. Bruce, you're all the lotter, out back of the old Science Building?
Yes, sure, yeah.
Yep, that's a great one.
The, the country drainage that they've been talking about the last couple of meetings for those things, so. I thought all of that was really good and moves the town in the right direction.
I'm very much in favor of also dropping down our parking requirements for like Target or whatever the next thing comes in. And pretty much saying, we'll trust you if you say you only need this many spaces. But if the police chief says no, now you have a problem with traffic and congestion, then you are monetarily responsible for finding a solution.
So, something to consider, and I'm not sure you were on the board when they approved this, but down at Abana, or whatever it is now, I'm not sure what the name is now. There's green space around some of those buildings, but it's got a stronger surface beneath it. Do you remember that thought?
Fire truck on there?
Yeah, so a fire truck could park on it and eliminated a lot of impermeable surface when they made that change.
I think there was, if they needed the parking.
Right, they could rip that up and it would already, like the base for the parking would already be there.
That one we approved on Hancock Street behind where, where Feeny Brothers bought.
Yep.
That was.
That was another one. So, it's something for you guys to consider, amending the zoning bylaws. We can incorporate that as a change too. Because the, the parking is part of the zoning bylaws, so. But we could get the details on that. I have.
That always do way of a student.
Right.
Well, having read this, or through it pretty quickly, a little bit earlier, and kind of looking at a couple of things that we presented tonight. You know, I was thinking that some of what was being proposed, maybe some of these recommendations would influence our decisions. Particularly as it pertains to permeable surfaces. So, you know, if we pay this over, well, let's talk about that for a minute. Maybe that's not the best idea.
You know, I would be okay reducing parking spaces from 10 feet to nine feet if it is because they wanted to keep more green space. Not because they wanna put in more rail. You know, trade-offs like that.
Would you leave that as a waiver for some of the proposed? Of making a change?
So, you know, our standard is 10 foot, but if you want to save some green space.
You would cater a little bit to that tonight with the one I damaged. You need to grasp it, though. It wasn't all, the, the, the last one we did, very strong. We tried to get them to do that and they didn't bite.
Oh, yeah.
And that thing just seems to die when I drive by, I think.
I have no idea.
Not to get up the stuff.
Right. I, I don't know what they're, I have literally have no idea.
Yeah, stormwater.
Oh, no, I haven't seen that.
Stormwater's coming.
Oh, okay.
Probably what they're waiting for.
Wow.
Yeah.
I'm actually very glad to hear that. The, the PS, the Board of Selectmen have, or the town managers issued another post-agreement for growing and retail, I think, in the point to, it's not my retail, so they'll be back to the board on that fifth license of another location up on Bethune Street.
This I didn't understand was page 1 dash 5, drainage design?
No current requirements. I will ask them that.
I think it just means we have no preferences, it sounds.
Oh, we may not, but we may, they have to abide by the state law, the state's stormwater management. And then our new state's stormwater management, but I don't, I don't think we have a specific drainage design we're requiring them to use.
We defer to the state?
We defer to the, yeah, the guidelines.
Okay. Some towns, I think, have some specific preferences.
Because not, everything's, not one-size-fits-all, right?
Yep.
So, I want you guys to know that I have, contrary to popular opinion, a folder that says proposed zoning bylaws. And I have sent you guys what I have so far, a list. We can get going on that in October, November, whenever you wanna do it. We should look at some of this MS4 LED stuff. We don't have to do it all at once, but we should look at some of it. Yeah, the stuff we were just talking about. Maybe include it this year. I don't know what else is coming, but maybe include it. And we definitely have to take a look at some of the subdivision bylaws. And get those, get some of those revised.
Do we wanna put cannabis places on our agenda for next time? We need to, because there's been some developments, some of them, from what I understand.
The cannabis places?
Cannabis, I mean. Don't feel like I can say right.
Update, basically what we're asking for is an update to the status of the cannabis.
Yes.
Okay.
Especially if we're gonna be getting another one in front of us.
Okay, I can do that.
Let's put together some bullet points. Where the, the ones that were committed, where they are.
Alright, and I don't know if you guys wanna talk about the last three things. They're ongoing agenda items. You don't have to discuss them tonight. As you know, I think I sent you all, and I know Rick knows, that we have final draft of the MBTA community zoning. There's been one webinar, which I didn't go to because something else dropped out of the sky at me. But nothing on funding for technical assistance yet.
Are we still getting help from OCPC or Red Arrows?
No.
We're not?
We're not getting help from anybody at the moment because they haven't told us how we're gonna be able to do that. That was supposed to be released in September. So, what is it, the Mass Housing partnership that's doing, that's kinda driving the bus yet? They have the money. I, to my knowledge, they're not gonna give it to local regional planning agencies. I've kinda reached out to them and they're like, we don't know. So, we don't.
to make sure that the contours and, you know, the land is... The plants get built so it's not draining water onto the street or other properties.
But that's the problem that turned out, is that...
Right.
Historically, the land sloped away from the street down this way.
Right, and they...
And when they were built...
Put them up here.
Built them up, and now the water slopes down towards the road. Well, there's no place for water to go, so the road floods out. And the neighbors are complaining that there's water being splashed up on the front lines because there's no place, because people are jogging through puddles all the time. Basically, a ball was dropped somewhere during construction. I don't know who or where or why.
I'm responsible.
Yeah. And so now we have this problem on our hands, where the road's going to be compromised because there's just standing water. The other issue that got brought up was the... Our favorite house on Center Ave. Center Ave, right, Center Street, Center Ave.
Which one?
Is it Center Ave or Center Street?
Split level. You can get out and check.
Oh, yeah, Center Ave.
Center Ave. The split level, that got built.
By Mr. Kennedy, who was here tonight.
Across from the train station. The way they built it is that the water comes down center and into his driveway. So I think they've been... John Stone had been dealing with trying to figure out a way to deal with that, which is really probably an issue more of the builder he has.
I was going to say, they should go. That's... The house isn't even a year old.
Yeah.
You should go back to the builder on that.
But what I saw was a little bit of lip put up on his driveway now to try to keep something out. But again, that's an issue where...
So it comes off that property and the house right up down goes in their driveway?
Goes in the driveway, the new driveway in the front yard. But again, it's a situation where it wasn't built as we said it should be. So the reason I asked them to bring this to us was, what can we do regulation-wise to address these issues? Because it seems like it's happening on a somewhat common basis, or not common, but it's happening, that things are getting built different from either how we discussed it or different from how it should, or someone's not paying attention. So is there something we can do?
So if it's a site plan, you can very clearly make that a condition when you're going through a site plan. And that house and a special apartment, I think the house was a special apartment because it's in the Todd District, right?
Yeah.
And you could make that a very specific... For this, you don't even have topography on there.
Yeah.
And I think I said that to somebody, I explained it to him, that you guys don't even know what's going to be there. All you get are literally lots.
As long as that's satisfied.
Right?
Yeah.
Right, and they were. They were all perfect four-may lots.
Yeah. And then there's the building, the commercial building on Bedford Street, my personal favorite, that changed its entire facade.
Right.
It looks completely different. Oh, you were here last meeting.
So, I mean, all I can tell you is that the building department gets a copy of the approved plan.
Well, they're in last part of the promise. Hopefully, we got some of those reasons that they adopted in the past, which they've reserved where.
Right.
So would we have the ability to put into our subdivision rules and regulations that four-may submissions such as this should show topography?
It's a state law.
Okay.
We don't have any rules governing the four-mays. It's all master of the law.
So the homeowners do have some recourse if it's...
Yeah, but for these homeowners, what do they care, right?
Right.
Because of what is sheen off their property and going down and ruining the road down there.
It's open to ANR approval may require.
Yeah, I don't want to take the previous chairman's position where it's all, you know, copyright and copyright and/or buyer beware.
Right.
But I feel like we need to make sure that our language is buttoned up more. If we need to put something in the bylaw, that would put something in the bylaw that says, however we deal with changes or alterations or whatever.
With the seven family and ours, we don't have any.
Yeah, we don't, but, you know, is there something we can put in the general bylaws of the town that...
You can't. You would have to modify the subdivision for the roadway and the house lots, and you would have to modify site plan review, which is eminently doable.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Because you're going to be modifying that stuff.
Even in a subdivision, it's technically up to the building and the building...
Right.
Essentially, the building inspector.
It is.
Has had that problems before, where the builder didn't, you know, put the house fire on the bottom of the ground or...
Right.
Dragged it along onto somebody else's property. We don't have the...
There's a big problem with that up in...
Partially.
Off of Lincoln Street?
Yeah, at the drive.
At Le Drive, yep.
Yes, that's the one.
I mean, they ended up going to court over that one. The town went to court, too.
Right.
Because the building inspector at the time made a decision.
Right.
So that was... I just wanted to hear that plan, and you guys can definitely look at maybe tweaking bylaws and subdivisions about that. The ANR, sadly, we don't know anything to do. It's easy enough for me to ask for four or five copies of the plan, I forget what I get now, and then make sure the building department gets one. And says, "When these buildings come in," at least make sure that, you know, they're not building above a grade that we don't have the plan.
It's hard, right?
Yeah, it is.
And that becomes an engineering question, right? So...
Not for them.
I think we talked about that.
Yeah.
So to what extent does the building inspector have access to engineering resources? Who can look at something and say, "That's going to be a problem?" Sometimes happens at engineering.
But if... All right, if there's an issue, come see us. It's... People are... That one looks different than how they propose it. They have architectural designs up top. This wasn't just blank.
Yeah.
But it was much different.
All right, any other business coming from the board? Your motion, go adjourn.
I've got a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for watching us. Have a good evening.